Yeah, very expensive.
Areas and.
There's a picture of.
Come on.
Four of us went over there for dinner. I grabbed forty dollars.
Yeah.
How is the light down?
You know, that's the speed of speed up.
My wife had a burger, eighteen dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
That's what I had when I went to Denny's with my wife.
I had a, it was a uh.
The pushers, the pushers.
Seafood ravioli.
Pushers.
I'm like, oh, this ought to be good.
How many did you get?
Four raviolis about that big.
Did you tell them you can't see the fish?
But they bring it on a plate that's this big.
Yeah.
So it makes it, you know, it makes it look even worse, like, really?
I like the old.
Pull up on the bread. That's why they call it soup.
Yeah, I can't see it.
I can see it. It's a bike over.
A little pony bread, right?
Yeah, it did that.
We went there, we all went there and.
Oh, yeah? This thing was like eight hundred bucks for the burger my wife had. That bill, hundred forty dollars.
Go to the back room, have a couple cocktails. Sit at the bar, locate.
You like the bathroom?
Well, I like the bathroom, yeah, I mean, it's always good.
Pigeons for the part of market.
Ah, it is. Well, depends, you know, if you're gonna try to, I said, I mean, I.
Yeah, right.
If the Patriots are playing on Sunday afternoon.
Then you have to watch it too.
No further discussion tonight. Hey, Alvin?
It was.
Slow it down. Is this in the, oh, it is, okay, but I didn't see it.
Yep.
All right, cool.
It's behind the R S P for a little bit.
Excellent, all right, cool.
Thanks.
Good?
Yep.
Everybody good?
Yep, good, good.
All right, we'll start the meeting at seven o four, call me in order. Meeting everybody, we got a full board president, administrator, calling secretary. I did a little bit of housekeeping, just started off. Unfortunately, I'd rather do it in private, but the was required to do it in public. Um, and it's geared toward you Ted. Last week, excuse me, when I had a couple of citizens that were talking and they called me in order, how you jumped in. And so I could continue the, the increased verbiage and stuff like that, but I didn't appreciate you just jumping in. As chair, they called me in order, it's up to me to keep the control, all right? I appreciate that behavior. And, and also on the, I didn't self injury. When we talk to the public, I would expect more, sit on the side of the table, we use more. Courteous tones than we had last week. Follow up saying, okay, I just wanna make sure we get that out. I didn't appreciate it and it's kind of bothering me all week. Nothing personal, but just.
Nothing personal.
Don't like to expect that.
At the same time, I'm trying to listen to the conversation that's going on at the table.
I understand.
These people are interrupting the meeting because I can't hear. So, and you're not, you're not applying the rules to them as far as telling them they're doing the meeting. If they wanna go addressing when they should be addressing you, they shouldn't be talking amongst themselves.
And that's why I called meeting the order and I asked them to stop the conversation, I was being polite, give them a second to stop. And we're gonna about to move on, if they continue, that would have continued my.
Or they were gonna continue. But that was, that was later on too, they, they, they.
We hadn't even started, we hadn't even.
They talk during the meeting all the time and I have a halftime hearing what's going on at this table because there's background.
The meeting hadn't even really began until I just called it to order and. To me as a chair, take care of that though. All righty, move on, minutes, anybody wanna do the honors?
Chair. Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. From Salkin's meeting of Thursday, October fifteen at seven P M.
You got a second?
Yep.
All right, any discussion?
Uh, no, I'm good with them.
I do have a little bit, I didn't get a chance to read them until this evening. In the beginning when Ted was talking about the state, comparing the state to the Dunbarton, I believe I also included. My point of view is that you can't compare the state and the town, it's like comparing apples and oranges. Uh, that didn't make into the minutes, I'd like to have to reflect that.
Wouldn't it have to be amended?
It was right in the beginning, right?
Wouldn't have to be amended next week's minutes or is it getting amended these?
It gets amended now.
Yeah?
That was last week's minutes.
Okay. Do we need a motion to accept the amendment?
Um, we can. Make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect the comments.
Make a motion to reflect Brian's comments in this week's minutes.
One second. Any discussion?
I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor for the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those for minute, amended minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
You gotta send it, sir.
Apologize to Alison, I didn't get a chance to look at these until right before we got here, Tony.
Yeah, no, I plugged you up before.
You did, I saw that.
I didn't see it till about five thirty. Let's spend all those crazy, crazy weeks, Allison. All righty, moving forward, we have moments, we have twenty here. We have two here, right?
Yes, short and long and then the R S P, gonna roll off.
Short one, any short one?
Well, good.
Oh, oh, oh.
Try to pass, get them to put them in. Just put it in the shop they have.
I see, so one now. What do you think?
There we go.
Bad, enjoy the vacation?
Yes.
Good. All righty, where do you wanna start? R S P or budget?
Do the easy one, the budget.
Good, our work. Overall, you're thirty percent left.
Yep, I do have, as I was telling you tonight, I do have a lot of outstanding bills, some of them I've contacted. The contractor that actually get the bill from, they've done the work, we haven't seen a bill yet.
For what?
For maintenance, repair to the compactor.
Okay, yeah.
Haven't seen a bill for there yet.
Oh, you know what, I was my boss, right?
No idea, I had no idea.
They'll do it, they'll have an estimate on that.
No, because remember I told you guys last year, it could be a couple thousand dollars or it could be several thousand dollars.
Depending towards a random one.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm guessing it's gonna be on the lower side because they didn't have to do anything to a rod, it was more taking it apart, ordering all the seals, hydraulic hoses. Some stuff that we didn't plan on, which is hydraulic hoses, I'm thinking it's gonna be on the low side, I've asked them for a bill, I haven't seen the bill.
Well, they want your pay, they wanna get it to us.
Yeah. The, the, cause I know that's the biggest one that sticks out to me, is the maintenance line, I do have some other pending maintenance. I don't dare go forward because I don't know what I'm gonna, what's gonna be expended on, on that, they just, uh. I've started to have some of the service work done on the con, on the bale was inside the recycling center, changing oils, fixing a couple hydraulic leaks, that sort of thing. I do have some other stuff, the, one of the baleers, um, I need to have, probably none of these. I like the grease and come out and look at it, it's making a noise, I don't know if it's, it sounds to me like it's in the motor or it's in one of the reverse valves. That'll make you go down and then go back.
Yep.
It's, it's either the motor or it's in there, I don't know, I'm not a mechanic, but once again, I don't wanna start going up on the wind. Spend some money that I don't know, that I'm gonna have. I have some maintenance coming up with the Mac, I just got it inspected.
You saw that?
You saw the bill, um, it's throwing an electrical code now. Which, that truck will self diagnostics itself, except for when it comes to electrical, when it's electrical, the computer can't diagnose electricity. The last time this happened, it ended up being two injectors and to give you a ballpark, it was about twenty-two hundred dollars, that front set. Although the injectors have little pumps on top of them. You know, so I'm gonna have to get that fixed, find out what's going on with it again, it throws an electrical code. So I'll have to have that checked, find out what's wrong.
How's it running?
It seems to run okay, but it seemed to run okay before too, and they end up actually having two bad injectors on it. I don't know what the long-term effect on, I'm not diesel mechanic, I don't know what the long-term effect of having bad injectors is, I'm assuming eventually it's not gonna run right.
Right.
Would be my guess. I do have a little bit I'd like to do on the compactor, one of our doors, we opened it going to the hopper, but there was a sagging in on it. So now we gotta open, we gotta pick the door up, so I would like to get that looked at, but once again, I need to get some of these bills in and getting paid before I start spending some more money on them. The next line down, apartment equipment, I bought my Talajack. And I got it at a really reasonable price, it's been here, it's been paid. But I'm gonna need to buy a Salzo, our Salzo, shorted out, that's the end, she's done, it's, I don't know, six, seven years old. So I'm gonna need to get a Salzo. Uniforms are actually gonna be, I talked to the uniform guy Tuesday, to get the guy sized up for uniforms that don't have them. And he's on vacation next week, so following week he'll be in and we'll place the orders for uniforms. So, fuel costs, I'm assuming that there's gonna be some extra there, I still show us thirty-five hundred dollars in, in fuel, fifty percent, we're most of the way through the year. I'm anticipating, probably gonna have a tank of fuel for this kid's air, which is a hundred gallons, that tank's a hundred gallons, probably gonna do. Two or three more fill-ups with a Mac, which is, it's running about eighty gallons of fill-up. You're gonna have that, plus whatever we're using to pack up, could be another two, three tanks in that, that's usually about thirty gallons of fill-up. So I'm assuming that there's gonna be some, some left in there.
Right.
Coming down, fees and services, there'll, there'll be nothing left there, they gotta, they gotta come up, do the yearly test on the alarm system.
The Ash, the Ash and Lab, that doesn't get paid out.
That's all, that's, I actually just got the bill today for it, I haven't even opened it, it was just in my box today. So I haven't even seen that yet.
So it's pending.
Yeah. The C and D, we're actually over on it, I'm planning to have a little extra, maybe we still have two and a half months left for, for hauling there. So I, I would think we'll be overall budget wise, there's still gonna be some money left, but I just need to watch to make sure we can still cover when demo comes in. As winter gets here and colder weather starts to set in, demo starts to slow down. We should be going about this time of year, we should be going every two, two and a half weeks on a load now. And as it starts to get into winter a little more, it'll get a little longer, come December, towards the end of December, we'll, we'll pretty much, um. You know, history repeats itself, we go five, four to five weeks on, on a block, so it'll slow right down. If there'll be some more there, I'm not anticipating a ton load more, but there will be some more demo. Incineration, that's gonna be an interesting one because in the past, uh, this is the first year that we have actually had to pay twelve months and twelve months. When we were in the co-op, you paid eleven months and then you paid, it was always off a month. And then the last year we were with them, we had to actually catch up, cause it's the way they did their program, they're always off a month. So this year we'll be paying twelve months, as well, the last bill we get will be the last week of December, which will build, you'll get like the second week of January, will be the last of them. We'll be close on it, I ran the numbers, probably two months ago, looked at it, and we were just about even. With the co-op.
Yep.
You know, tonnage wise, but I wanna review it again, I had said I had time to review it again, um, and see, there's a good possibility there'll be some left there, but just need to understand that. It'll be twelve months of payments to have.
Well, you still have twenty-five percent left in the line, so.
Yes, right, and that's why I said, I think there, but you never know how people have tendency, if weather's good, still to clean out before Christmas.
Yep.
You know, I've seen that where we have had fairly decent weather and have big cleanouts, you're ready for the holiday season, people start hauling, and it doesn't take long. You can have the same effect if you get a lot of rain, a lot of moisture in that time of year, you're paying for water.
Yep.
So you can have the same effect either way, not actually have the large amount of material. You can have a smaller amount of material, but have a lot of water through it, and there's nothing you can do about that. I'm sure, you know, I would like to think that we'll have some left in there, like I said, I think there'll be some left in maintenance, I just can't tell you exactly how much it's gonna be. As it gets closer, definitely, hazardous waste, I haven't seen the bill from Bo yet. We could be looking at some additional charges this year for.
Well, you already paid out forty-seven hundred.
No, that's what's left.
I'm sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Uh, this year, we normally, we normally had a company that came and picked up the recycled oil, they were scheduled to be there, um, at the last minute. Where the guy who does it, Bo takes care of that, they set it on, the guy became very ill and was not able to do it, so. The Clean Ventures, I believe, you know, Clean Ventures, they ended up taking the oil, so there'll be charges there that we've never had before. Usually, like I said, normally someone would be there with a trailer, they filmed a drum and they take it, use it in the shop.
Yep.
But that didn't happen this year, so we're gonna have to pay to get rid of that, so I don't know what the additional costs are or anything like that.
Yeah, it's gonna be, I did, do you give him the contracts, I'll draw it.
They always give you the, you know, for the waste oil?
Waste oil and.
I actually need to see him because my tank is about seven, eight full, so, I'll, I'll hook up with you tomorrow and grab that.
Cause I brought the state contract, they actually pay it, they pay us for taking the waste oil, instead of us paying them, they'll pay us.
Right.
So that's revenue coming in, um, I also brought one for electronic waste and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think, uh.
We just have to call and see if they'll honor it, if they'll pick it up at our location, instead of the white farm, cause it's for the state.
Okay, yeah, I can look at that.
But I mean, just worth a, a couple of phone calls, you might be able to get away with it, you know, like, for example, C P U towers.
Yep.
They'll pay us for them, instead of us having to charge our residents to get rid of them.
Yep.
You know, stuff like that, so if they'll, they can accept the state contract on our behalf, we actually end up with some revenue coming in and charging less to our residents.
Right, I think you'll find what happens in that case is that usually you don't get enough of those C P U's to offset the other costs.
Well, no, no, they're still, they're still gonna, you know, obviously things like T V.
The T Vs, that's the big ones, the big one, the big, the big cost, the TVs and the computer monitors. Those are the big costs.
Could you have some paperwork for me, vacation you haven't gone through yet, cause I know I gave you those, they're just single.
No, this is, this is the first I've gotten out of my box with these today.
Okay, I need more.
Yeah, we can just print them up, they're right on the state website, not you a computer, it's a thing you could look up.
Yep, I can do that.
As well, um, you know, if there's opportunities to utilize those contracts and we can make money instead of paying it out, that's all about us, that's for sure.
Uh, on the hazardous waste, we'll ship, uh, one more load, and I try and make it a big load, so that we don't have it carrying it through into next year. Uh, we're, and we're not at a load yet with TVs and that sort of stuff, fluorescent tubes, the same company takes all of that.
Well, you don't, you have, you don't have to go along to fluorescent tubes and universal waste for a year.
Right, we have, we've already shipped, uh, two loads of it.
Okay, so we're good.
Yeah, we ship every, and that's one of the reasons, like, this company that we've been doing business with. It's kinda one of the reasons we went with them, was before we had two vendors, one did fluorescent bulbs and that sort of stuff. Um, the other did E-waste, well now, this company here, they take, actually one company we did do, we take a bolt, but you had to load them in the open top. I mean, in a closed top dumpster, bulbs aren't gonna take in, you know, in that dumpster, things move around. So, and actually when bulbs are broken, they charge you more money than if they are whole, even though this process I seen on TV, they crush them, but.
Yeah.
You get charged more money if they're broken.
Yeah, no, they should be boxed up and.
Yeah, that's the way we do it, they're all boxed up or tubed up and they're counted on and that sort of stuff, um, so there'll be another load of that. Excuse me, we'll have, recycle, we'll have another load, a freon going out, we'll have another load of tires. We'll have a load of glass going, and I have no idea how much will be in the glass, I mean, it could be, the last load I shipped was, uh, somewhere as around twenty tons. And the cost is those thirty dollars a ton to get rid of it now, twenty or thirty, I think it's thirty now.
It's pretty cheap, that's a big fee.
Yes, uh, so there'll be another load of that, um. I think what else we got going out? See, if I think that's a bill as far as cost wise, oh, propane tanks, they'll be going out, that's the other one. We'll have a load of propane tanks going out.
Just get some residents using for target practice.
There you go, someone that makes a big boom, cause they got fuel in it.
Then they just scrap iron after that.
There you go, I actually had them, at the scrap yard, we had one that didn't have a valve in it, no fuel in it, no nothing, and the guy with the grapple actually grabbed it. Do it like that on the grapple, and back in truck, it still wouldn't take it, even with a valve on it, I questioned it because I go in there and I saw a pile, probably half the size of this build, and a propane tank, so I'm like, why can't we send them? And my, and our broker says, no, he said, we won't take them, okay? I don't know why, so he says, they won't take them, they're afraid of them going through the, I, my guess is, the way she kinda explained it was, in our load, they're mixed in. When they, when other companies take them in, they're taking in a full load, they go in a specific spot, so now, there's no surprises, like in our load, it's all mixed together, they go through the shredder.
Right.
They don't see the tank and there's still some residue in there, I'm told it creates an issue. I don't know, like, for fact, I'm around the shredder.
Thoughts, questions, concerns, so on?
Um, good on, I mean, if I have, um, I mean, that's what I'm anticipating right now, if there's any other issues, I mean, I'll, I'll come in and check with the board and see how things are going, but. I'm not anticipating anything else, I, I can give you a couple of heads up for next year, uh, we gotta be looking at a few items next year. A couple of probably fans, those, uh, large diameter fans, we have one now that was given to us that we've had for about seven, eight years now, resident gave it to us. But it's pretty much on its last leg, and that's a fan we used during the summer, so, you know, I, I think I, when I looked at the Home Depot, Sam's Club, I think they were a couple hundred dollars apiece. And, um, that sort of thing, we're looking at a couple of fans, um, we'll see how it goes this year with our snowboard, might look to replace that next year, we've had it. I think about twelve years now, but we'll see, I gotta, when I do the maintenance on it this year, we'll see how bad it is, I had some worked on, but I had some weldings done on it, uh, we had a crack in it.
Is it a walk on, it's all good?
Yes, yeah, but I bought, when I bought it, I bought a commercial grade snowboard, and that's why it stood up really well for us, it's a simplicity commercial grade. Like I said, I've tossed with it, I'm gonna look at it again this year, see how things go, if it's not, you know, if it's just a simple, uh, doing the belts again on it, it's usually, you. Pretty much about, we go through about a set of belts a year on it, uh, which to me isn't a big deal, they're not had to change. You know, look at all the, this is a possibility, I'm not saying definitely, but I don't wanna have any surprises for you, that possibility.
Those are all sincere, they want.
Yeah, they are, in fact, they may have two of them, so you might have a, borrow one of theirs, sure. They'll have a surplus.
And then, uh.
Some anticipations.
No, that's fine, I'm good.
Some anticipations, uh, we'll kinda get it, we're still in the budget, but officially thinking ahead for next year, uh, looking at some decreased lines next year. Maintenance will be a big one, we should be able to decrease, we're trying to get some of the stuff done now, that we've laxed over the years doing. Get that taken care of, so we should be able to decrease that line.
Did you get some building maintenance done?
Uh, wait, I contacted six contractors, actually seven, I think now, I've gotten two quotes, I've been waiting two weeks for the third quote. Four of the guys didn't even want anything to do with it, and said, no, I'm not interested, really, so, I have two quotes, I'm just waiting for the other one, and, um. Lean just gave me some forms today, I ran out of my phone call forms.
Yep.
So I have that, I have a form. Yeah, there's some electrical, I got, I got a really good price on that, I got three prices on it, uh, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, number wise, one was, uh, three fifty. One was five hundred, and one was thirteen hundred.
Well, that's quite a spread.
Yes.
Thirteen hundred, really?
Yeah.
Interesting, kinda makes me wonder.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
One of them, one of them didn't spec it over, yeah.
Yeah.
But the first, uh, the first one is a power tractor that's done a lot of work on it, he's very familiar with it, I explained to him, I broke a light, so I have to have him fix the light, I broke it, another guy did it, I broke it. So he didn't fix the light, um, so it was, uh, two hundred to do the panel, to do the panels, we talked about, having them labeled, like just supposed to be.
Right.
Um, he was two hundred to do the panel and one fifty to fix the, to put it in the light, there's an eight foot double four bolt, I smashed it with a skid steer. Couldn't see what I was doing up above me, I lifted a bale up in the top of the, the top of the forks, I went right through that.
Use a spotter next time.
Yeah, well, actually, they shouldn't be around me, because if that bale falls, they're, D O A.
Well, the spotter doesn't, it's not within the, uh, kill zone, if they.
Well, what, what I figured we.
You could yell at you and say, hey, stop, you know, so you.
This one particular light actually hangs, the trusses run this way, and the light hangs this way, so when I talked to each one of the electricians, I said, I'm gonna put the light this way. So it's actually protected by the trusses, I can't hit the trusses, but that light hangs just, down just enough, and I actually hit that, broke the bolts in it. When I hit it, then, that, if that's up inside, I can't hit it because it, it doesn't lift that high, what happened, and you're right, I smashed it, it was my, my responsibility.
Is that the only one that hangs low like that?
In the area that we use that, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that one right there.
Not anymore?
No, not more, it's kinda gonna be you here.
Now it's getting darker, it's getting tougher to see.
Yeah, it is.
Did you get that scheduled to, to happen at work, or are you?
Yep, I just, uh, he needs a little bit, he needs, uh, two weeks' notice, he said, so I said, uh, yeah, no problem, I spent, I gotta get, I ran out of forms. And I went on vacation, I didn't get a chance to get him up, I was out of state, but I got him today from Lean, so I'll get him filled out, and we'll keep going with that, I just needed some more.
You have a printer down there with your, your computer?
I spoke with Jim, uh, when he did the computer, and he was supposed to come back and hook it back up, that he needed a cable to go from the computer to the printer.
So you do have a printer down there?
Yes, I have a printer, copier, fax machine, I had to get scans too.
I didn't know if your network, so you could print stuff off here as you need it, just pick it up and up.
And, I've been trying to get in touch with them, she gave me an email today, to get in touch with them, so I sent the email, I got confirmation that he's gonna get back to me. So we can get that cable hooked up and get it set up.
By the way, you can just print your own form as you need it.
Exactly, right, exactly, right, every now and then I can, I have to either send it to Lean and have her print it, or I have to, if she's not around, you know, I mean, if I do it and she's not there, like on Wednesday night or something. Then I either send it to my house and print it, which is a little, that's, just email it to myself, but most of the time I just send it to them.
Oh, so you're on the network, just send it to one of these printers and.
Yeah, and, uh. Uh, it's not to me either, me either.
You just gotta map it, that's all.
Yeah.
Even like.
I struggle with that stuff.
Can you do it remotely like that?
Hell, yeah.
Okay.
I consider my, I consider my laptop at my kitchen table, and I can actually print in Concord, or if I map it, I can even print it up in Pittsburgh. If I wanted to.
You're actually giving it a guy, aren't you?
Yeah, but I struggle with those things, so you don't do them all the time, you know, if you did it all the time, it would be second nature, but I do it rarely, so, if I do it once a year, it's a lot.
See, when I do it, I, I'm logged in, like I'm sitting at my station, so it's not, it's on, so it's ready when I get in.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, now you got an email on stuff, if you could, you know, just, I'm thinking out loud here and, you know, generally chime in, um, but. Where you gone over a number of things that you know are upcoming for our invoices, we can put together a quick list and send it to Lean and us, so we just, so we keep it in the front of our minds, so we don't, uh, overshoot our, our water demand here.
Yep, no, I make sure I'll stay, I, I, you know, I'll make sure that it's within there and I actually can get some, I guess, can't tell you exactly how much you're gonna get back. You ever gone over budget, and I don't plan to, and, you know, I'd like to see some money come back, so. Like I said, the fuel, uh, you know, as long as fuse, fuel costs stay within reason for the upcoming year, um, I don't see a reason why I can't drop that line down. We've actually, um, you know, since we've been hauling to bow our fuel costs, have dropped considerable.
Do you have a date with, um, through September, so the first, November will get off over?
For the bow?
No, 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 when I have to do a journal entry to transfer their funds to pay the, the bill.
Yeah.
And, uh, so he's in the system for up-to-date expenses.
Yeah, I'm figuring.
I thought you were talking about recycling, you know, bow and, that's what I thought you were going with it, not the fuel.
Oh, I thought we were talking about.
Like I said, I'm figuring, yeah, three more fill-ups with a Mac roughly, get roughly two hundred forty gallons, hey, do less. Three more fill-ups with a max roughly, get roughly two hundred forty gallons, hey, do less. I don't, I don't foresee it being a whole lot, I know I'm getting close to filling up again. Uh, so, you know, we'll be close, up on the gallons. And then, like I said, we're gonna be using the pickup and probably one more tank, let's get, yeah, that's a hundred gallon tank that we pump into that. So I do see, I, my, my feeling is that there'll be some fuel left.
That's when we go on after RFP, right? I played with this a little bit, I said, this portion here, I had it pretty much squared away, except we just, whatever we decide for Exhibit A can just be inserted and away it goes.
Yeah, I did, uh, I actually didn't get a chance to look, I made this up today.
Well, they took out some of the insurance, um, wording and stuff like that, but really applied to like the contractor performing a service, like we did over at the fire station. So that kind of, that kind of stuff came out and then put, all the rest of the stuff pretty much stayed in it.
Oh, this back page, this here's what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Over in the RFP, I noticed on the last page, or actually, Allison pointed out, I'll change that town hall library.
Well, yeah, there's a number of things that need to be changed, you know, I gotta put in like the time, date, the bid, they'll put in, you know, what the contract is for. There's a few little, you know, then on page four, the bid award dates, I don't know, has to be updated before it goes out, but. Question is, right now, I'm eating potatoes of it, what goes in Exhibit A? I went looking at on some stuff.
Yep.
I saw your, what you put together as a spec. And then I went and grabbed a couple others and just tacked them on the end, so I could compare like apples to apples here. And I was just wondering, where did you get your information for a spec, I mean, were you looking at a particular manufacturer?
Nope, I looked at, um, actually, I looked at a big spec that another, another town put out.
Yeah.
I took information from three other companies, kinda picked the best of all. Tried to come up with something that, that I thought would be feasible for the town and, uh, we'd actually get a little bit of longevity out of.
Yeah, well, that's why, some of the, some of the stuff is heavier than other stuff, I've seen some, you know, seven gauge and then I see ten gauge. I went with the heavier ones I found, I just wanna make sure, cause I don't wanna, you know, over.
Right.
You know, overpay for something that's, you know, marginally better.
Right, and I know, uh, some of the companies that I looked at, their information, uh, if you don't specify. A gauge, you're gonna get ten gauge, or seven, I said seven gauge material, um.
That's what I just was wondering, so.
Like the grease fittings, I was real, uh, real adamant about putting in, I, I went online to research a little bit, Zerk is just a brand name. It's a company and everybody's familiar with, but I made sure I specified ready grease fittings. On the first dumpsters that we have now, that wasn't specified, uh, and those dumpsters actually have push-in fittings. And I don't know if you're familiar with those, but some of them, you put the grease gun on and they blow back out.
Yeah, when they start roasting up in the.
These are, yeah, these are. So that's why, at least for any ones, if you have an issue, you can take the tap, tap it. And you can pu, oh yeah, you can put it in, like in France, put it in, and you can go. Those other ones.
So format wise, I mean, it, it's immaterial, I don't really care what format, as long as we get all the proper information, but I mean, as you know, there's some. Certain different things in different places that each spec has. Um, the one for a standard specification that I had on the bottom is, to me is kind of a crappy one, in English.
The one at the bottom, you're thinking?
Yeah, it says standard specification, and we'll get the octagonal one.
Okay.
Number one?
No, it's on the second page too.
Yeah, but. You're looking at the, okay.
No, no, I'm looking on the second page, it's the system, but.
But it's the number one.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, number one.
Okay.
You know, like, and I threw that out there, I mean, I just grabbed it and cut and pasted in there, that one looks kind of, you know, chintzy.
I, I noticed, uh, one of the ones I was going through, uh, actually other towns bids and their specs. It was interesting that some of them were very detailed, and then other ones were a lot like that bottom one.
Well, more detailed, better, uh, but then again, you know, like I said, the second one, on the second page, you get, you know, it's. Three, you know, the understructure, non-center is seventeen and a half inches, you've got twelve inches on center, I mean, is that overkill or not? I mean, is there, that's why I just wondered, that's.
The only, the safest part of it, is the floor, um. We have run, I compared to the dumpsters that we have, the steel dumps, when we haul our scrap metal in.
Yeah.
That dumpster, um, and I don't.
This one's gonna be for the um, contractor.
There, this is trash one.
Right, so I mean.
The floor versus one that's eighteen on center.
Yeah.
The ones that we have are eighteen on center, we actually have problems with the floors doing this, the ones that are twelve, it's more support in the floor.
Oh, it's a heavier unit, there's more steel, it's gonna be more cost.
Right, and these boxes right here, um, even though, from what I, everybody I've talked to, the different vendors, the different manufacturers. Even some contractors I talk to that use the octagonal boxes, uh, versus a fifty yard square box, you actually get more compaction. From what I'm told, I'm only going off what they told me, in these boxes versus the other boxes. You're gonna get at least the same weight, so now you're talking more material, denser material in a, in a more confined area. My concern was that we'd act, we had, excuse me, potential to buckle that floor. If you're packing a whole bunch of stuff in, was my only concern.
That's why I'm just asking, I mean, I just haven't noticed that kind of stuff, that's why I was up looking and whatnot.
That was the reason I put it in, you know, my concern is that you're gonna be packing these boxes as hard as you're packing a fifty yarder, even though they're. It could be seven yards less capacity, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't damaging floors and that sort of thing. That was, like I said, that was my only concern on that. On this front page that you have, um. Might be the way I wrote it wrong, the door opening shall be framed, that is the opening around like this.
Yeah.
Which is actually part of the structure of the door, and on that door, on this opening, it's like this, they actually. This piece goes all the way across and then you have the supports, the back part of the door, that's why I have it, and even the ones we have now have that same. Uh tubing, same style tubing, and that's one I did the same for the framing of the, of the door. And then, you'll see the same on the uh, open tops, they have that same square tubing. Huh? Yes. That's how you offload it, you actually have a big door in the back, it has a hole in the middle, and you back up, which you compact. And then you put your diaper on, and then, when you get to where you're going, you pull down lever, pull the safety chain, pull the second safety chain. You release the lever, the door swings over, the whole opening, so if it's seven feet high and seven feet wide, that's where your opening is, I mean, I'll help.
So it looks, correct me if I'm wrong here, so we have two of these that are for fifty yard dumpster. An option, I mean forty yard with an option for fifty, is that correct?
Yes, I put it.
But one is twenty-two feet, one's twenty-four feet.
Right.
But they're basically just a lot of the same, I guess, so.
The, um, what you're looking at. The, the difference being, the one that is uh, forty yard with the option of fifty uh, twenty-four foot length. Those are, yes, that's a closed up that we use for, um, the titanium aluminum, and the reason I specified the longer frame. When you go with a shorter frame dumpster, you actually increase the height. Okay, where we're using these two particular dumpsters, is where we drive up with a skid steer, we dump into the top.
Right.
If we have a shorter dumpster with increased height, we may not be able to dump into it, so it's gonna create another, so I figured that was safer to go with. What we have now, which we can dump into.
The side walls and.
Right, and the other ones that went with the option of, if you look at the transfer. You go down there, look at the dumpsters, you notice the glass dumpsters, even though they're tilted a little bit, and that's to keep the rainwater and, during the winter, that's uh, keep it. Yeah. The best we can, um, if you look at the glass in the demo, those are twenty-two foot frames, so they're short and tall. If you look at the, the steel one, when we haul the light iron in, that's a twenty-four foot frame, so it's actually down the wall, it's short and long. And to, to keep them all fairly consistent, we like to stay about twenty-two and high.
Yeah.
And even if, if you say, well, a fifty is gonna be higher, yes, that would be a good thing for us. Uh, for the, keep the potential for someone to fall in that, if you have a little more height, potential for someone falling in that dumpster is less than if it's. Below that wall, I mean, at some point, uh, we're actually gonna, we should look into, in my opinion, put some kind of. Whether it's just post or link chain or something, to give people that, oh, there's a hole here. I know everybody looks at it, and you know, I know there's a hole there, you probably know it's a hole there, but, you know, y'all know accidents happen, you get in a hurry, toss something in. And you could go, it happened to a gentleman he talked to, when we're in the dumpster, and that's it. Just, if we had them, something that's a little tall, it would be a bad thing.
Right, now, it's, the dumpsters are free onboard, and the, those are the transfer station.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Wait, are your bidders all fairly welcome?
Um, one is in Rollinsford, Rollins, Rollinsport, yeah.
Yeah, it's over beside some of them.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, yeah.
But, my guess is, their dumpsters will come from, I think it's New York. They're the, like the middleman, the factory's over here, they, uh, so I don't know if they'll come into them, or if they would actually.
Drop them there, yeah.
Drop it in a facility, that's why I put in the option, um, to, deliver it to the town of Dunbar. Or the option of the town picking them up, if we could save a few bucks picking them up. Um, another one is in Georgetown, Mass.
I wouldn't put that in the bid, I'd wait till you see who wins it, and if it's, if it's a reasonable option for us.
Yeah.
Then we can negotiate that with the, the winning vendor.
Yeah, we can scratch that out.
Wouldn't you, you know, what would, you know, you'd drop the price if we come pick them up ourselves, just if you deliver them, they, they will take off. A hundred bucks a dumpster or something like that, you know, they're, great, but we never know.
And one of the companies is in, I sent up to Lean, I think one of them is in Connecticut, and another one is in.
I'm not going to Connecticut, sorry.
No, I'm not interested in going to Connecticut, trust me, they're in, down there.
That's an expensive trip.
So we're gonna take that line out?
Which one?
Um, shipping to Dunbar?
No, it should be shipped to Dunbar.
I would, you know, feel like you're pretty, you're, I'm, I'm like number one, yeah, and say the same thing, you know, dumpster, uh. Dumpster should meet USDOT, USDOT does not have any regulation on a dumpster.
Yeah, I didn't know if I did or not.
That's USDOT, in fact, you know, in just federal regulations case, someone else has something, put around. Um, and then it should be free onboard, and or if it's, the shipping comes free. And the destination is to the transfer station, cause obviously we don't want it dropped off here.
Okay, we do have.
Right, and then if they, if they do get a local, relatively speaking, a local vendor, and it's advantageous for us to go pick them up, then. Then we can negotiate that after a fact, but if you give them, you give them that option ahead of time, they might get you a better price.
Okay.
So then we'll just anticipate it.
And the correct wording is USDOT, not NHDOT?
Correct, that's USDOT is all the uh, the shipping and hazardous way, you name it, all that kind, so that's all there per view. DOT just, enhancer wise, just fixes the roads. Alright, so we got, just a little bit of tweaking on it, so, you wanna go with the original seventh gauge, twelve inch on center and stuff? If that's what you want, we, we can go with it.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, I mean, I think it would be the best thing for, for the town.
You gents agree on that?
Yeah, might not be able to buy these again also, so if that gets us, you know.
We might kind of.
Down the road.
Was this, is that we've gotten, those boxes were purchased in two thousand and two, we're now going to enter in two thousand sixteen. Those are considered light boxes, if we got something a little bit stronger, a little bit heavier, you know, if we could actually get some more time out of them. It'd be well worth it, in my opinion, uh, you know, the biggest killer that I see for those boxes is the one that they said on concrete. I mean, you gotta have it though, it's gotta be on concrete, that two is assault, and very honestly. I try not to take that truck out with assault, I mean, obviously you have to, but I don't have to take it up during the storm with the worst of it is.
Right.
When it's in a liquid state, um, and we try to, when temperatures permit, we wash the boxes. You know, rinse them down, we rinse the truck down, but, you know, you never know when the temperature's gonna be right to do it. But we try to keep that cleaned off it.
Wait, are there any, um, uh, applications that can be sprayed onto these boxes? I know, um, when I was having on my car front up in Bahaba this year, the, um, the guy that helped me out. Uh, he had some application that he sprays on his truck.
Really?
Yeah, and I can't remember what the stuff was called.
It wasn't fluid film, was it?
It was, oh, maybe that was, the name was, it does sound familiar, but it was something that he, I guess he, um, you know, you can have your truck sprayed by him. Charges to do that, but is there something like that that we should be maybe investigating to, um?
Up in Daring, there's a gentleman up there that does it for a business, I actually have his email address.
There's a couple right in Bowlin do it too.
Well, they, whether it's oil or fluid film, fluid film is stickier than oil.
Yeah, I don't know what the stuff is, this guy, you know, he's been using it in front, so he said.
Well, they use it quite a bit all the time for that kind of stuff.
I use, on my personal vehicle and on the town truck, it's had oil. Uh, my wife's vehicle, however, she doesn't like the dripping of the oil, cause it consistently drips. You know, until for like two or three weeks, well, she's getting in nice clothes, by any way. Uh, her vehicle is gonna be fluid filmed, it'll have some protection. I mean, I've heard, probably constable, I mean, definitely I can look into that and see if that's a.
Yeah, I'm just curious if that.
I, I know they.
Extend the life.
I know they typically, when they come, they come sprayed, I mean, or you definitely probably wouldn't hurt the. I think you can buy that stuff, uh, right over at the R M R, we can probably have it made in us house.
Yeah, I was just thinking, even if you did it in fall, so that you have it, best conditions for the winter.
Yeah.
And then make it kind of, I don't know what the stuff costs, I have no idea what it takes to put it on, but just thinking about. You know, stretching out the life of these things.
Yeah, so, um, if we could tweak these, probably by next week, we can get them out, after, next, get them out after next Thursday, make sure everything's co- copacetic.
Maybe we'll wait until next Thursday maybe?
Well, that way, you know, everybody can weigh in on it and improve it.
Well, next Thursday, we're gonna be over at the, um.
School.
School.
Yeah.
It won't take longer to do this.
We only have half an hour before public hearings.
Well, are we gonna just meet at the school? I mean, that was, that's what I thought we were gonna do, and was.
It would make sense, I mean, like, start here and then move there, and, you know.
So just go to the school, us for seven.
For seven?
Do what we gotta do, and then at seven thirty.
The meetings, for the regular meeting that starts at seven.
Yeah, and then we'll do, go into the public media at seven thirty, and.
Oh, it just maximizes our time, cause if we were to start here, then we have to leave and go later.
Yeah, 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 but we'll be, you know, be at the circus, yeah.
But, um, yeah, we just, this one, you know, should be a quick in and out, I would think, if we get a tweak, we can get ready to go.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Wait, two week turnaround, probably?
Yeah, I wanna get it.
I mean, cause it's pretty cut and dry, it's just boxes, so I mean.
Is there, uh, we just throw this out there just to try, um, cause we did lose a week of me being gone, if we could actually. Uh, like work with Lean, say on Monday, get these tweaked out, and then email it to you guys, any chance we can, you know, maybe by like Tuesday, get them.
Well, we can't do anything unless we're in session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, we can look at them individually, but, you know, as drafts, but once, you know, we can't, we have to do it as a group.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, with two, you know, a couple days, I, you know, as long as we get like a two week turnaround, we open them up. Once we sign the, the document, whomever we gets the bid, now we can, the money is basically encumbered, because we have a signed contract, so it's not gonna lapse.
Yeah.
Was it five, was that a five year?
But you also had a, I thought there was a grant also you're trying to.
Yeah, I guess they had an extension on there.
Oh, you did? How long is that good for?
Three months, I'll get to the exact.
No, it's fine, three months, you'll have these by then, yeah, yeah, no, it wasn't like another two days, it's.
No, she, they gave me a three months extension.
I would say by mid, you know, by, towards the end of November, we should have these things lock, stock and barrel, signed seal. Then when they deliver them, whether it's sixteen or fifteen, twenty fifteen, is immaterial, because the money is gonna be. Encumbered once we know what the price is. I guess we'll have a contract for it. I believe that's the proper procedure, correct, anything wrong?
Yes, encumbered, once you sign the sign contract, go ahead.
So I don't think we're in too bad a shape, really. Have you also on a bid search?
No, not in the bids. I, I, um, I, I need Woody for a couple things, uh, before you leave.
Absolutely.
Um, Woody, you were at the meeting last night, so you kinda know what I'm looking for here, I think. Yeah, uh, I'll send. Yeah, uh, I'll send an email to lean, so.
Send it to me.
Um, I'll run it through lean, and then she'll forward it.
See, see me here.
I will. I don't know if I have your email address.
Yeah, I'll send it up to us.
Did you? No, I'll look for it then. But I'm sure I've got it, um.
Yeah, I suppose you will too.
Yeah, we'll do too. No, I'm sure I've got it. I keep everything. Um, Ted and I had that meeting last night at the school, and we have some homework to do here. So I need a couple things from you, and if, um, we could get this wrapped up by the third of November, so we can have it ready for, I'd like to get a look at it before the next, for that Sorkman's meeting on that week, which I think is the fifth or the sixth.
Okay.
Cause we have our meeting on the ninth, so it'd be good to have it. Um, a detail on the weekly activity that takes place at the school, you know, where you're picking up trash and doing whatever it is you do.
Okay.
And what I'm kinda thinking is, what's, what's the winter schedule like, you know, while they're in session? And what's the summer schedule like? I wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine it's the same, I would assume it to be different. So if you could give us like an idea as to uh the volume, and the amount of time that you think it takes to um, include transit time and that, you know. It's the time for, you gotta go get it, you collect it, bring it to the transfer station, unload it, and, you know, complete that whole cycle for me, that's really what I'm looking for. And then, um, there was a question also about the recycling payback. And I have no idea what, what that value is, I know from, you know, comments you've made to us here at the board, you said the recycling thing's kinda dwindling, because the market is falling off.
Right.
So, and I know that's subject to market conditions, so if we can maybe get an average on that, I'm not looking to nail it to.
I ask a dumb question, is that, is that related to the school story?
It is. Because the, because the, the, in the, um, going forward, if, if we, if the school takes over their own trash hauling, I'm assuming that, that's a private contractor. I don't think they'll be hauling it to the Dunbar transfer station, I wouldn't think. So today, the school is under the impression that the recycling is generating, um, some sort of a cash flow back to the town. From the school.
And the, the marginal amount that they're gonna, that we get for recyclables, I think it's gonna offset?
I, Brian, it's a question. They, they asked it, so, you know, I, I figured it was worth looking at, I don't know what the impact is, you know, maybe it's nothing, maybe it's a lot, I don't know. But that was their question, they, you know, they, they wanted to know about that, and I didn't have an answer, and uh.
I would hate.
Yeah.
Just thinking aloud, I mean, the only recycling that would take in credit then would be whatever they recycle, not what the rest of the town recycles.
Well, it's, it's not what they're, they, they just, um, were looking at what their contribution is to the recycling. I don't think they're looking for credit back, I don't think we credit it to them today.
Right, no, I don't mean physically.
But, um, I think they were just looking at what their impact is on that recycling money.
How do you wanna go about that?
Well, that, that was a good question, Woody, cause I don't know.
I can, I can tell you how it happens, like, when I picked up today, um, you know, I had a cab full of books and cardboard, I mean, a lot of stuff. And then I had two huge bins of, uh, one of plastic and one of paper, and I had a bag of paper, and I had a couple bags of trash.
That's all over the school?
Out of the school. I didn't pick anyone else up today, just the school. Typically, when I pick up, I can tell you exactly how it was. I picked the school up Tuesday, when Wednesday comes, um, we pick up. I go to the library, I actually do the firehouse first, then my first up. I go to the library, pick the library up, I go to the highway garage, pick the highway garage up, come down office, pick down office up. I make my back around loop, I pick up the police department, and I go back, I pick, the school is my last pickup. And then I go and dump it all, on Wednesdays. Thursdays, I pick up the school, and then Saturday morning, I pick up school. Usually when I pick up Saturday mornings, um, we'll fill that pickup. And either cardboard, in the cab, and then depending, I usually have two bins in the front. Front of the bed and the rest is bags. But that's a Friday, you know, that would be Thursday night and Fridays, cause I don't pick up Fridays. And then I just have to pick up, uh, Saturday morning, I have to school.
So you're doing Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So three days during the weekend and Saturday.
And then Saturday morning, yeah. And Saturday morning, you, is your school will go and transfer that.
Okay, yeah, um, I don't know, um. Yeah, I guess it's all based on volume and based on the mix, but, yeah, I don't know, it's a, it's a, that's a hard one.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask that is because, I, I take it right off, weeks vary with them.
Yep.
Um, if they have deliveries one week, I get ball by, I, I haul pickup loads of kind of, the bed was full.
Well, my, um, I guess my thought was just an average, you know, I mean, I'm not even trying to nail it down to a hard number, um, that you're gonna hang your hat on, but just, you know, best guess, I guess, is all you can do.
I mean, the, the other.
It isn't like we track what we're hauling.
Right.
So, it's gonna have to be your best guess.
The other thing I could do, and it would be close, and I don't know how close, we could take a week at the start next week.
Well, that's an idea.
And take, uh, Tuesday, cause we have scales, take it inside, full recycle on a scale.
Yeah.
We could get a, a weight, and then we could do it for a week.
Yeah.
And that would give you a, a ballpark idea, if you can figure out over.
It's better, yeah. Yeah, no, I like that, it's a real good idea. It is, it's better than a guess.
At the closest second year. Yes, you're gonna get.
Yeah, no, I like that, that's good. Yeah, do that, that'd be fun.
Yeah, just don't include the time of weighing it.
Yeah, yeah, don't include that in your time for, for this exercise. A different subject now, Woody, well, it's kinda the same subject. Do you have any idea who the supplier was back in the day when the dumpsters back there?
Uh, waste manager.
Was it waste manager?
Yeah, and it was between five thousand and fifty-five hundred dollars in that ballpark, and it came out of the transfer station budget, if I remember correctly.
Oh, really? About five K a year?
Five K to fifty-five, it was in that ballpark.
Somewhere in that area?
Yeah, and it was, uh, it was waste management, and it was a big dumpster.
Yeah.
It wasn't the little one you're talking about now.
And that was in your budget, huh?
Uh, it came out of my budget, and that was one of the reasons that.
Were you at the transfer station then? Cause I don't, I don't mean that all.
Oh, I could, I worked for the highway.
Yeah.
And then I worked for highway for like five years, and then I left, I went to work for the town of Ware for three years. And I couldn't physically, I was a heavy equipment operator, but I couldn't take the beating that the machine gave me, so I, I blew out my knee.
Yeah.
Um, then this job came open, so I applied for this job. In that three year span is when they had, if my memory serves me correctly, that's when they had that dumpster. Uh, because when I worked for highway, I used to pick up.
Any idea what year that was?
We'll backtrack a little bit, fifteen, two thousand. Might be someways in the vicinity of ninety-six, ninety-five, ninety-four, in those three years, I guess, yeah, is what I'm thinking. It might be a little more, a little more this way.
No, that's, that's fine.
It's in that ballpark, or just ballpark, and I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Yeah, and um, now I'm gonna change directions here, I'm gonna. Go ahead. Where did they have one dumpster?
I think that's all they had, I, that's all I remember having seen over there was one, it was a fairly large dumpster, I couldn't tell.
I remembered when I used to do basketball.
It was a big green one, it had the sliding doors on the side, then it had the flip plastic tops on it, it was for a front loading, front loader, on the top.
Yeah, it's like a four cubic yard.
I picked up bigger than that. That was a big dumpster.
The cubic yard's pretty big.
Well, a, a two yard dumpster, if I did my math correctly, and I'm not who is that, would be three by three by six, that's two cubic yards, and this was considerably bigger than that. I, I don't know for a fact.
Could've been a nine.
Yeah, it, it, I remember it being a large dumpster.
Yeah. Back in that time, they probably weren't recycling, so everything was going in it. Yeah.
Cause when we do basketball, everything is on the garbage, back in, back in those days. Everything recycling has started, and they really weren't cyber beating.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would look around like ninety-six, ninety-seven, that ballpark.
Yeah, Ted, was there anything else we took for task? I thought, I thought that was kind of it. Um, and I'm thinking down the road here for toward the replacement roof on the, the building next door. Um, and I'm not looking to transfer a cost, cause it costs whatever we take to the transfer station, I'm not intending to transfer a cost. But, um, to, to, if we were, you know, to put a dumpster over there and we took care of the disposal of that material, um, versus it's in the contract bids, you know, that they'll do it, um, I mean, the money is the money, I guess. But, um, I also know that the bidders that we have are in higher than the money that we have allocated toward that project. So I don't know if, um, if that's an option.
That's actually an option, we can negotiate that after.
Yeah, I know, but I was just wondering, is that, um, do we have somebody who wants that kind of material?
I had, I, you know, you mentioned, I, I spoke to the N R A about it, my contact.
Yep, yeah.
Uh, she's put her feelers out for it.
Yeah.
A couple of places that she talked to, uh, won't take the material, because it has a, that plastic has a fiery type of material in it. And they wouldn't, there was nothing for them to do with it. Um, I did ask her, I spoke to her again just before I went on vacation. And she's putting some more feelers out to, there's some other plastic companies that have come along that they're, that they're actually getting involved with now, that they did get involved with in the past, um, and she's, then, they go share, talking with them, I guess, I must say. To see if that's a material that they can do something with, but the ones that they have been dealing with right along, said, you know, there's some sort of fiery type of material in that plastic that they.
It's a good for them.
Alright. Well, I guess probably in the, um, you know, technology's always changing on that. We know, maybe somebody has a place for, but if it's not, it will end up going, um.